Those social district up and running huh?
Gonna go Friday. Website will be at website will go up on the website tomorrow, press release will go out tomorrow morning. Ready to go.
We're closing Monroe down then too.
We'll probably do that Thursday.
I just need to know how I'm gonna get home.
Jefferson.
Truck route Marty.
All right, I'll take the super highway home then.
Yeah, you got a couple of.
Go down Washington, it's the nicest road.
It's only nice, it's really nice when it snows and they plow it.
That's the best it is.
You can do, you can do at least ten without jarring yourself.
All right, it's seven o'clock, we'll call this meeting to order, Sue can you call roll please?
Councilmember Groves.
Here in Lowell, Michigan.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here, Luddington, Michigan.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Here in Lowell, Michigan.
Councilmember Jankovic.
Present Lowell, Michigan.
And Mayor Devoe.
Here Lowell, Michigan. Motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Cliff and Marty, any discussion or changes? Sue?
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor Devoe.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right, citizen discussion for items not on the agenda. Nobody Mike?
Don't see anyone.
Okay, all right, whole business COVID update Mike.
Um, just not much has changed, um, we, we still can only have gatherings up to ten people indoors. I know the restaurants are up allowed to operate at twenty-five percent, but they have not made any changes to other indoor gatherings. Regards to vaccines, we're still having diffi-, I mean, we're still having difficulty getting our employees for vaccines, it's, if you're a police officer, you can get it, technically, our other employees should be getting them now, but they're not. So it, it's just wait, wait and see, I guess. In regards to the city hall, um, I'd like to keep it open, keep it shut down at least another month. I'd like to give it, I like to honestly wait until we have an opportunity for our staff to get vaccinated before we start having contact, we really, other than we had the tax bills due on, on Friday, so we let people in for that, it really wasn't an issue, we didn't have a ton of people coming in, but our traffic's been way down, but, and most people have been able to do what they need to do, either online or through the phone, or, you know, even if people still come in, we are letting them in.
Hey, Mike, on the meeting thing, more than ten people, so this came up at Vision today.
Yep.
Can Vision meet because it's less than ten people, or no, because it's more than two different households?
Um, that's a good question, I would, I would say that you're probably, with less than ten, you can probably get away with it, that's a probably a city attorney question, now, now that also isn't an open public meeting, so, that, that's a whole nother issue, um, I mean, I can get it, I can, I can ask Jessica, but i- it technically, the way it is, is indoor gatherings, no more than two households, no more than ten.
Cause we discussed it today, and then, you know, if even at full attendance, there's only seven of us.
Right.
And we never get full attendance, and, uh, but Nate had mentioned that he wasn't sure because there is something in the order about, um, two or more households, so, for the gathering, so.
And supposedly, like, I know for a fact, once you get over ten for an open meeting, it ha-, you have to have Zoom, and every, we have, you have to go to Zoom.
Yeah.
Like, we have a board and commission meeting, we've had board commission meetings that they don't get ten, less than, they get less than ten people, so we've been letting them go.
Yeah, cause I know, I think Parks is meeting in person, Leo, is that correct?
No.
I think that's on Zoom, that's tomorrow on Zoom.
Okay, my, the one I went to, I didn't know.
Uh, I believe. HTC.
Okay.
We met in person.
The showboat too, we've been doing.
We've been doing that.
Person, but, you know, no public shows up, so, I don't know, I can ask Jessica too, I got that showboat stuff to talk to her about, but, that question came up, so I thought I'd run it by you. Uh, right, any questions for Mike on COVID? Okay, move to the showboat, item B.
Um, showboat, just a couple of things, um, as I told you at the last meeting, the construction got delayed some, obviously, because of this, we needed to get the, uh, seat for the, for the second floor ceiling, we had that issue come up. Um, so, budget wise, we really haven't had any changes to the budget, um, I know there's revenue out there that's supposed to come from the chamber, but we haven't taken it yet. Um, we've only had, in your bill run tonight, there was a bill, there was a pretty large bill for Wolverine, but it was, it was budget as part of the project. Um, and then I believe there was one, one consulting bill. So, budget wise, we're in good shape, I don't know, I don't see mark on tonight, so I don't know where they're at, if they've had any increase in fundraising in the last two weeks, um, with the, uh, with the Wolverine, um, contribution. Um, the showboat, the showboat non-, or the showboat six nonprofit met on last Wednesday. Um, still just waiting, and they gotta put their, they gotta put their bylaws and all that stuff together, uh, before they're technically formally a nonprofit, but we're working on that, and then, but they have, uh, they've spent quite a bit of time, they do have a rate structure in place, um, that I think they're gonna be getting out pretty soon. Uh, we are work, we are having discussions about maintenance plans, I've reached out to Chris Chamberlain, he is putting a maintenance plan for, together for us. Um, I know Dan has been working on some things just from their end, so things are, uh, moving along pretty well, Jim, do you have anything to add from that meeting?
From the fundraiser standpoint, we have a meeting this Thursday, and I guess we'll have, uh, more up to date on how we're doing Thursday.
Mike, when are we gonna put the bathrooms out for bid?
They're out for bid right now.
Okay.
They're out for bid, and the deadline is March third. Hopefully, I'm, I'll be on vacation from the eighth to the fourteenth, hopefully, between the third and the fifth, I can review, myself and Mike Lynch can review the bids, and, and get a recommendation for the following council meeting, I'd like to have, I, I'd have to have that done before I leave. So, that's my, that's my goal, and then hopefully we can have an April construction.
Mike, wa- was there an actual design, or are they design building this bathroom?
It's GC, it's general contractor build, it's not a design.
But there was there a design, so they had something to bid on, how many?
Yeah, oh yeah, um, Mike, Mike Lynch put a, yeah, he put up rendering together.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing it, but that's okay.
Yep.
All right, any other questions for Mike on the showboat? Social district, item C.
Yep, good news about the social district, we'll be able to start on Friday. Uh, as of right now, four of the five entities that are particip-, that have signed up to participate, have been approved, the fifth one, I think should be this week, later this week, but, um, I've talked to that, I've talked, I've emailed all the businesses that are able to participate, and, uh, so hopefully they can go forward, um, I know, um, DPW is gonna be working in the next couple of days now that, that the snow is clear, for the, for the most part, they'll be able to set up the district, um, Wednesday, Thursday, and ready to go on Friday.
Mike, I seen in, uh, our budget report there that you gave us, um, we have Portageons coming for this, um, how many and where?
Two, there'll be two Portageons, um, there's one over, gonna be on Monroe, Dan, where's the other one at?
One on Monroe, and then the other one will be on the water, the water river front.
Yep.
Over by the old BPW.
And we also have hand sanitizer stations with them.
All right, questions for Mike on the social district? Fire cost recovery ordinance twenty-one dash O two, Mike?
Yep, uh, one second. We've been able, since the last, or two meetings ago, uh, Jessica's been able to, uh, codify the, uh, the, the, uh, recommended ordinance for the, um, for approval by all three municipalities pertaining to cost recovery for certain fire and emergency services, um, as, as you know, we presented this at our January nineteenth meeting, and there was support to consider the ordinance, since that time, Jessica's codified the ordinance to meet municipal requirements in our ordinance form, and it's attached in your packet, I'm recommending the council approve ordinance twenty-one dash O two, which would create a cost recovery ordinance for fire services. So it's, it's, it's identical to the two townships, just there were a couple of languages that pertain specifically to cities.
Okay. I make a motion, are we doing that? Make a motion to approve twenty-one O two.
Also. Sorry Marty.
No.
Any other questions for Mike or Shannon? Sue?
Mayor Devoe.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
All right, new business letter A, planning commission's annual report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, as, as per the, uh, zoning ordinance of, uh, two thousand and seven, the Enabling Act, it's our annual report. I'd like to thank, uh, Commissioner Tony Ellis for, uh, putting this together. Um, you all have the packet on it, I'm sure, but, uh, we did, uh, we were dominated by marijuana, uh, zoning, uh, questions, uh, and, um, so we, we went through seven of those, I believe, and then we also had, um, New Union Brewing, we had Riverview Flats, we had, uh, Grand Rapids Gravel, we had, uh, Culligan, and we had King Milling, uh, Monk Dollar, um, zoning, um, issues that we had to do. And finally, um, I'd like to, again, thank Indy Murray from the Williams and Works for working with us on updating our zoning ordinance. Uh, three years, and, uh, this past, uh, our past meeting, I think we passed our last, uh, zoning ordinance, uh, to go before you, which would be the definitions. Uh, so hopefully you will have that on your schedule, uh, either tonight or in a future meeting here. Um, but we have finished the, uh, our, our five-year review, took us three years to get through it, and, uh, but we are up to date at this point. So we've, we've been, uh, very active, uh, and I'd like to thank all the commissioners, uh, sometimes going through the zoning ordinance amendments gets a little, uh, onerous at times, a little dry at times, but they, uh, stuck with it, and the same with the, uh, heavy, heavy load of, uh, new businesses coming into town. Um, so, over, all in all, twenty twenty, uh, while not a good year for many of us individually, it was certainly, uh, a busy year for the planning commission.
Questions from the.
Hey Bruce, this is Jim, um, what can, what else can we do for you, I know you guys do a lot for us getting these things done, but is there anything we, the council can actually do to, to speed things along, or help you out anyway, or form?
I, I would say at this point, we're, we're in pretty good shape, um, the, 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 the real trick is, is that we've gone through the zoning ordinances, we are up to date on that, so, that's, that's helpful, and as we pass it on to you guys, um, you guys, uh, act upon them fairly quickly and do those kinds of things. I think as the zoning ordinances go, um, any information that you can give to the public concerning the marijuana, uh, situation, the numbers and things of that, I, I would look at taxes received, uh, how much money have we gotten, uh, police reports, the fact that there's been very little activity from the police, but I think the general public is concerned, um, about the numbers, and anything that the council can, can do to address that, a- at least a public statement of some sort would be certainly awesome.
For sure.
Is that something you would draft, Mike, or Mike? For what he's asking?
I can do that, I mean, I can.
Yeah, I'd be happy to present it as well, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, just wanna make sure if somebody had the lead on it, and
Yeah, we.
Took care of it for that application.
Didn't we, didn't we discuss some of the specifics a couple of meetings ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. You very well could, you, you very well may have, but my, my point is, is when you guys talk about it at a city council meeting, there's what, ten or fifteen of us on tonight? In general, I'm saying, if you go on Facebook, things like that, there's questions out there all the time, a lot of misinformation, um, just information that the general public really doesn't understand, and, and, and really needs, um, you know, just some plain, plain speaking English, I guess, just telling them, you know, what the city is about and what we're doing, I, I, we're not doing anything wrong, we're doing a lot of good things.
I wasn't disagreeing with you, I wasn't disagreeing, I was just recalling that the chief gave us some statistics, there really hasn't been
Right.
any criminal activity, or anything, so, anyway. It's a good idea.
Yeah, my, that's my whole point is to get it out to the general public, and, and, you know, go on Facebook, look at some of the issues out there, uh, you know, some of the misinformation, it's just, uh, it's just stuff that shouldn't be allowed to not be addressed, I guess, at some point. Maybe it's in the newsletter with the, uh, uh, with the water bill, or I, I, I'm not sure exactly, but.
It's a good idea.
Just something along that line to help us there. Um, and I do think, uh, Andy, Andy just does a wonderful job for us, and, uh, you know, obviously, a lot of our time has been taken up with the marijuana issue, but we're also reaching a point where there's not going to be as many, um, applications, so, uh, you know, that's the other issue is that, uh, you know, hopefully it'll slow down a little bit, so, anyway.
I gotta say Bruce, I've been to a few this year, I've had questions on a couple of different things, and I've never even gotten to the point where I needed to ask them, I think that planning commission is stacked with so many smart people, that a lot of the questions get discussed before they even come to the public comment portion of it, so, I think you got a really talented board there, I think they got a really good leader in you, sitting at the top there, and, uh, Andy's just a wealth of information, so, kudos to all of you, because I've had questions answered before they've even had to throw a chair or anything, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate that, and you're absolutely right about the commissioners, they're, they're outstanding, they do their job, they do their homework, they know what they're talking about, um, and we've been trained, uh, hopefully, uh, we'll continue that process, try to do that process, and the new one coming up will be the redo of the, um, uh, not the zoning ordinance, but the other one, the five-year plan for, for the city. Uh, that will be coming up in a couple of years, so we, we really should start looking at that, cause there's, there's obviously major chunks of the city that are changing, and we'll have to, uh, take a look at it.
Yeah, well, I appreciate it, you have any, uh, complaints about that Chambers guy, or you want, you wanna talk about that off camera?
He's, he's a little loud at night, but other than that, it's just fine.
All right, any other questions for Bruce, or Marty, or Mike?
Thank you, have a good night, everybody.
Thank you Bruce.
Thank you.
All right, Chief Witherall, Fire Authority's twenty twenty annual report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, hopefully I'm coming through clearly, uh, getting a little, uh, digital in and out here from time to time, had some technical difficulties with the iPad, so I'm pulling this off on the phone tonight. Um, me and the, uh, leadership team sat down, uh, right off the beginning, and started putting together our twenty twenty, uh, annual report, looks a little different than the annual reports that have been out in the past, uh, we wanted to have a, a good covering of all information of what we do besides just call statistics. You guys should have received those all in your board pack digitally. I've also sent the file to Sue to feel free to put on the city's website, under the Fire Authority tab, as well as the other two townships, um, on their tab. It's our goal to have our website up and functional, um, by the month end of March, March month end, um, and have that on there as well, so that, uh, any, any citizen that has any thoughts, questions, concerns, uh, about their fire protection, uh, can go to our website, or any of the municipal websites and pull this. I'm just gonna briefly shoot through this, uh, primarily touch on the goals. Um, going right into the opening, uh, eight hundred and nineteen calls for service last year. I'll go into what the, that breaks down statistically here in a little bit. Twenty twenty-one goal, uh, that I've set for the team, uh, was to improve efficiency, efficiency with our new software programs, which is often run into the races right now. Uh, increased paid-on-call membership, which, as you guys are all aware, we are at a full roster at this point, so that, that's a quick check, which I like those, uh, develop a part-time program, which, uh, thanks to all three municipalities, has been incorporated into our budget for this upcoming year, and conclude the, uh, engine three, uh, replacement spec, uh, and award the bid. I also included a page in here on our governing body, there's a common misconception that we're a one governing body that's governed by the city, uh, so we wanted to kind of put that information out, that, uh, you know, how our board is built up, when the board meetings are, so on and so forth. We did discuss some of the changes that happened in twenty twenty on the board, and I also briefly touched on the McGrath Consulting Report in the twenty twenty, uh, report here as well. Personnel changes, as you guys are all aware, uh, Chief Van Overbeek retired after thirty-one years of service in, uh, September. Uh, Ken, Cam Sharon, uh, left us after seven years, uh, pursue his tree, tree service. Uh, we picked up two additional, uh, new hires in twenty twenty, Matt Harrison and, uh, Brenda Heron, again, the twenty twenty-one, that's gonna be a two-page year by itself right there. Uh, honorable mentions, um, our firefighter of the year this year was Jim Oswald, he also received a life savings award. Uh, rookie of the year, a probationary member of the year was, uh, Jordan Lambert. Uh, Lieutenant Eric Kelly also received a life savings award, and I'm supposed to mention, I did as well, I didn't put it in there, but my guys kind of busted my chops for not putting it in, so. Um, other achievements, we've had a lot of people in a lot of classes this year, uh, and that's gonna continue through twenty-one as well, uh, we've got a number of folks in, uh, EMT as we transition from an MFR to an EMT department. Couple of folks that are, uh, getting ready to finish their company officer classes, or fire officer classes, and, uh, a couple getting ready to finish their, uh, fire one and two. Inserted a organizational flow chart, so that, uh, people can see how, how things flow, uh, as well as our vision, vision statement, and our mission statement. Inserted our personnel leadership to incorporate to the flow chart, and then, uh, personnel roster as well, um, it's helpful for everyone to be able to put a name to the face, or at least see, uh, you know, what, what makes up their local department. Facility reports, uh, we took over, uh, doing our own landscape lawn care, uh, from the city. Last year, uh, we started cutting our own grass, taking care of our own landscape, one of the things that we focused pretty heavily on was our sprinkling. Um, moving inside of the building, we did a complete makeover of the chief office, most of the front of the building, uh, including ceiling tiles, uh, wall paint, things that hadn't really been addressed since the early nineties when we opened that building. Uh, we also converted all of the bay area lights, office lights, and bathroom lights to LED, so we are a hundred percent LED now. Uh, one of the big drives this year is, uh, to in, uh, incorporate motion detection, so that, uh, when somebody enters a room, lights come on, if they're not in there for any period of time, lights go back off, uh, there's a lot of bay lights out there on the floor that I come in the morning, kick those things on, if they stay on all day, that's, that's a pretty sizable amount of energy that we're burning off that we're hoping to save by putting in some motion detection. Uh, also updating our training room, and looking at our kitchen and flooring. One of the things that I'd like to, to note is that everything on that facility report, uh, was all handled by our in-house staff, we didn't contract any of that stuff out this year. Uh, we're fortunate to have builders and electricians and plumbers and many trades on our paid-on-call staff that are willing to step up and take care of these things for us. Equipment report, uh, as you know, we, uh, took a donation for our Zodiac water rescue, uh, boat, and, uh, motor from the police department Zodiac, uh, donation came from local business, the police department donated, uh, the boat motor, that's up and running, uh, the board approved the purchase of a new chief truck back in November, that is here and in service. Uh, we've got it all set up for, uh, EMS now, and for fire response as well. Uh, one of the things that I'd like to note on here is that we did our, our annual hose and ladder testing, uh, which accounted for six thousand seven hundred and fifteen feet of hose, and a hundred and twenty-five feet of ground ladders that were tested out of the department this year. Our twenty twenty-one equipment goals, hard to complete the county truck purchase, uh, evaluate, uh, replacement rescue tools, our current rescue tools are thirteen years old now, and in the way of, uh, hydraulic rescue tools, that's coming into the end of their life, and improved record keeping of our reporting system, which we're hammering on that pretty heavily. Probably the most focused point of this report is the call reports. Twenty twenty, as you guys are all fully aware, was an odd year even for us, um, with, uh, the stay-at-home orders early on in the pandemic, and the, the hospital fears, a lot of people didn't wanna go to the hospitals, uh, we were running an increased number of DOAs, but a decreased number of medicals, uh, we had a massive decreased number of, uh, traumas early on in the year. And you'll see later in the report, uh, we had one month that we did forty-eight runs. I can't remember the last time in my twenty-six years of being affiliated with this department, that we, we only pulled forty-eight calls. Uh, so we, we did end up with an overall decrease of eight percent. Uh, two things that played into factor there were COVID, as I said, and we had no serious, uh, serious storms that blew through the area. In twenty nineteen, we had a hundred and twenty-seven down power line calls comparable to twenty twenty, where we only had twenty-seven down power line calls. So, the, the lack of severe storms and, uh, COVID accounted for a decrease in our call volume. Uh, another notable thing that I wanted to mention was, uh, between the, uh, months of October through December, between the hours of eight AM and four PM, uh, we reduced our apparatus on time. Say that again, we reduced our time it took to get an apparatus on scene, not just a person, but a truck on scene by over three minutes, uh, in that eight to four timeframe, which is, uh, obviously, as you guys know now, the new staff timeframe. Uh, that decrease of over three minutes doesn't seem like a lot, but didn't mean the, can mean a big difference, depending on what the incident is. Uh, call volume wise, uh, is a breakdown by zones, uh, you guys accounted for forty-three percent of the calls. The, uh, next closest was Lowell Township at thirty-five percent, Virgin's Township at twenty-one percent, and mutual aids of about one percent, and I say about one percent, because the way our system works, anytime that we go out to that Southern Six that Alto covers, uh, our system doesn't generate that as as a mutually, because it's in Lowell Township, so we're probably closer to two and a half percent on actual mutual aid, uh, calls versus that one percent. There's a chart in here that goes over the calls by years, just kind of reinstituting what I said, with, uh, the decrease in twenty twenty comparable to twenty nineteen, or even twenty nineteen, uh, eighteen for that matter. Uh, man-hours, it's always interesting to me that we, we look at call volume as a, uh, as a factor, and we don't look a lot at man-hours, uh, but when you look at the chart, again, go back to the fact that you guys accounted for, the, the city accounted for our highest call volumes, but Lowell Township actually accounts for more man-hours than, uh, than the city, as well as, uh, you know, Virgin's Township significantly less than, than the other two. Uh, part of that is, is, you know, we don't get long-running car accidents in the city. We get on a bad accident in the township, and it's gonna count for multiple man-hours, uh, because we're out on scene for long periods of time, and it takes a excessive amount of people, same thing with fires quicker knockdowns in the city. Calls by day, uh, as you can see, Wednesdays and Fridays are our busiest timeframes, and calls by month in twenty twenty, um, February ranked up there along with, uh, November. But again, May, April, fifty-eight, forty-eight, those are, you know, historically low numbers for us. Training reports, um, we, uh, just like everybody else, had to adapt to COVID, uh, we changed a lot of how we did trainings. Um, instead of large in-group, or in-person group trainings, we broke down to smaller, uh, group trainings, and those necessary hands-on trainings, we went to a lot of Zoom trainings. We didn't do a lot of outside trainings that we would have typically done, uh, over the average year. Our twenty twenty-one training goals are fifty percent of the staff to achieve, uh, EMT status, all of our officers. All of our officers to obtain instructor one status. Continue working with the city on a live burn training center. And all new members to be trained to firefighter two and EMT status. Fire prevention and community risk reduction. Big highlights here, late in the year, we partnered with Michigan Safe, which is safe as an acronym for smoke alarms for everyone, as well as would TV or WOT four and would TV eight to bring no cost smoke detection and carbon dioxide detection to any of the residents of our three municipalities. We started the program in October. We were able to install ninety smoke detectors and sixty CO alarms by year end. Our goal this year is to double those numbers, and I think we're probably going to come closer to the tripling those numbers by the rate that we're already going out and installing those at this point. We also have a goal of additional fire prevention training, including an additional instructor one. I'm sorry, inspector one. We'd like to get back in the classroom for fire prevention week. This year we were resorted to sending material home with teachers and doing fire truck drive bys to the schools.
Shannon, Jim, quick question in regarding the smoke detectors. Are you replacing existing one hundred and ten volt smokes or are these all battery operated standalone smokes that you're doing?
So they're they're separated alarms, so it is a standalone carbon dioxide and a standalone smoke detection. They are not one tens, they are the tenured sealed lithium ion. So it's a ten year smoke detector maintenance free, put it on quarter turn, it activates. We write the date on the outside of it that we installed it ten years from that date they're replaced. The program doesn't doesn't provide us with with the one ten hardwired units. We have offered to residents that have called us about having one ten hardware to put in that they just can't get up on the ladder and do it that we come in and unplug the old, plug the new ones in. We're not rewiring them, obviously, but we'll unplug the old and plug in news if they had them.
All right, thanks, Shannon.
We also, for the first time, had a trunk or treat event at the station. There was a drive through, huge success. We're planning on doing that again, as well as opening our community open house, hopefully in October again this year. Our CPR first aid reports, we've long since offered CPR first aid through our our department to most of the city entities, the police department, public work, so on and so forth. We plan to look forward to continuing to build on that relationship and do those, but we're also looking to offer a community based CPR training. We have five of our members right now that are signed up for CPR instructor certification so that we can host community based CPR classes to where anybody can sign up and come in and take these CPR classes with us right, you know, within our facility. And continue to work with organizations to change out the heart start AEDs that were purchased on a large grant several years ago that had been at a recall for the last few years. We've started phasing ours out and trying to get a good count of where they are throughout the community and getting those straight swapped out. And then our thank you page. So thank you guys for continued support. Thank you for listening to me ramble about our our last year here. We're excited about what twenty twenty one's got to bring and what all we can bring to the community and what the community is continuing to do for us. So one thing I'd like to note on that thank you page in the last part here. This lower picture right down here is you'll see myself firefighter Oswald, firefighter Kelly, or Lieutenant Kelly now, standing in front of our medic with a gentleman in a tealish colored polo shirt. That is actually the survivor from our cardiac arrest at Arrowhead Golf Course. So we were called CPR in progress. We arrived on scene, we worked down for a few minutes in the parking lot, couple of defibrillations, went to the hospital, two days later was home cutting his grass. So definitely a happy moment for all involved there. We were actually awarded life savings awards last week through the county as well. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them as well.
No, I have one for Mr. Burns. Are our AEDs at our city hall up to date?
Yes, the ones that the police department ones are.
Yeah.
We've taken the other ones out, we've taken the other ones out of service in city hall right now, so we'll have to we'll have to update those.
Okay, you do, you do have one in the box at the police department as well, I believe. Correct, chief?
We have one that we keep at the office and we got we got two to go on.
I have a question, Shannon, on the smoke detector CO two program. Do you have an abundance of those available?
It is a, so we did the the release with the ledger last week. We've done several social media releases. We we took, I think, seventy five smoke detectors and thirty CO arms in. And I've got enough right now that I'm going to fill the requests that are there. But I already have the next request out for the next round because we're we're getting in so many requests for these. Right now, it's a matter of trying to schedule the installations. I've typically been doing them during the day along with my day shifter with me. But we've now expanded to the point that we're doing it even in the evenings from guys getting out of out of work or going to do it as well.
Well, that's that's kind of where I was going, but it sounds like you don't need any help getting the word out.
The more that we can get it out, the better. I prefer to, you know, to have them in every house in the entire area. Key things to keep in mind about smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors that most people don't realize. Carbon monoxide detector is only good for seven years regardless of whether you change the batteries or not. And a smoke detector is only good for ten years. It's the sensors inside begin to fail at that point and aren't as efficient. So that's where we're seeing a lot of people will call and say, well, I only need the carbon monoxide. So we'll come in and we'll check the smoke detectors while we're there and we'll find out they're fifteen or twenty years old and we replace those as well.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I got one. Yeah, I got one for Shannon. Shannon, the historical district we have in our downtown, we all have fire detectors inside of our buildings, but at nighttime they go off. Nobody's ever going to know. Do you have a plan or have you ever considered a plan to make that something different to where lockbox on the back of the buildings, easy access in for you guys? Some sort of.
So we we've gone to, so we we work with Knox, the Knox company, it's K N O X. We have a secured key, we're the only ones with that secured key to to enter the buildings. So anytime that Stu or anybody from city hall sends me a plan for review, that's what's coming back from our office first and foremost is that we're requiring an Knox box. So anything that's that's pulling a building permit at this point, we are requiring Knox box be added to. Every time we do what we we try to get out for our annual fire inspections at all businesses, it's just not possible at this point. But anytime we do an inspection, it's one of the things we bring up, we recommend a Knox box. You know, we'll find a way in. It might not be pleasant, but we'll find a way in. For the three hundred dollars for the Knox box versus the lead paint doors that are in the front of your buildings.
Yes.
You know.
But that's what I'm getting at. So if a business owner would like to put one on the back of the building, can they just go to the fire department and have you guys order it and?
So so they go to knox.com, knoxbox.com. They select their box because we haven't, some of these boxes can get upwards of seven, eight hundred dollars. So I didn't put a required box out there, it just has to be a box that we have access to. You select your box, you'll type in your zip code, you'll select our department because ours and Ada will come up when you put in four nine three three one. And then it will send me a notification saying that, you know, Red Barn Antiques is requesting a Knox box. I approve it, they ship it to you, you mount it, I come out and lock it. So once it's mounted, you call us up and we'll come out and lock it up for you.
Okay, good to know.
Thanks.
Any other questions for the chief? All right, thanks, Shannon, appreciate it.
One thing I'd like to add though, before I jump off and let you guys get back to your regular meeting here is just a subtle reminder, I am there Monday through Friday, eight to four. If anybody would like to come down, take a look at the new truck, the new chief truck, or see the building for the first time or whatever, I'd be more than happy to host you in. Marty, I've hosted you in with a surprise pop up group that I've been the mayor for, but regardless, be more than happy to host you guys in. So other than that, have a good night, take you for your time.
Thank you.
Sorry, there was a cop outside. All right, thanks, Shannon. Item number C, two eleven Grove Street Water Service, Daniel.
Okay, the house at twenty eleven or two eleven Grove Street has undergone prehabilitation, is in the process of being sold. During the late fall, a question came up on the water service for this place and having it replaced. Upon review of our records, we found many issues with the existing service, all which brings about the need to have it replaced. The existing water service line is known to be a galvanized pipe. It is also known at one time this galvanized pipe was connected to the water main by use of a lead pipe, a lead pigtail, if you will. The twenty eighteen Michigan lead and copper rule requires the city to replace any galvanized water services that are or were at one time connected to a lead pipe. We are required to replace the line from the water main to eighteen inches inside the building or the first inside valve which ever comes first. To make this water service line replacement more challenging, the current service line is connected to the service line for the for nine oh five East Main Street and runs through the back property at nine oh five East Main and led to the house. So a new service line in the street right away with a new tap on the water main is needed. The service line to nine oh five was replaced in the nineteen eighties with all copper pipe. The lead connection to the water main was removed when the orange water main was replaced in twenty sixteen. City's proposing replacing the water service with copper pipe. There's no water main on Grove Street, so the service line will still need to be connected to the eight inch water main on Main Street. And then it would run through the green belt to the property and then into the house. It'd be about hundred and seventy feet in length. We received a quote to have the service installed from Lee's Trenching Services. They're the ones that do a lot of our water work. The work is expensive because of the need to enter M twenty one to tap the water main and then fix the road and then to work around the storm sewer and the sanitary sewer lines in this area. The utility department contacted other underground contractors but have not received another quote. It's my recommendation that we approve the quote from Lee's Trenching for the installation of the new water service line at two eleven North Grove.
Yes. Any questions for Dan? Anybody want to make a motion to replace the water service at two eleven Grove?
I will make that motion, sir.
I'll support. Uh, any other discussion or questions?
I I missed everything, I'm sorry, I lost internet, I'm now back, so I really don't have any questions, so I missed Dan's presentation, so.
I had two more.
I don't. I tried to get it to stay off longer, Dan.
All right, Sue. You're muted, Sue.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
And Mayor DeVor.
Yes. HSP number two motor, Dan.
Okay, each of the three high service pumps at the water plant operate through an individual motor starter and switch gear. These items are original to the water plant. Recently, high service pump number two started having issues with its motor starter not operating correctly. It's been a random problem that's becoming less random, if you will. There is concern if the motor starter or switch gear fails, we could be scrambling to make repairs. If this were to happen during times of high water system demands, we could have distribution issues. Also, with all three units being approximately forty years old, there is concern of each of the other two failing around the same time or shortly after. This is an item we did not anticipate for the in the current fiscal year. The current configuration of a motor starter and switch gear that we have is no longer available. Our S technical, who has been handling our electric portion of the water plant for many years, has provided us with a quote to upgrade the equipment for this high service pump number two to a variable frequency drive unit. This would allow for an energy savings to be realized by enabling the water plant to match flows of this high service pump with the flows of the incoming water. Presently, high service pumps operate at one flow, which requires the pump to be turned off and on in order to keep the levels in the plant and the system even. The greatest energy used by a motor when it's is when it's initially turned on, so the less times the unit cycles on and off, the more energy savings we can realize. Also, a single frequency pump operates at the top of its operating range of the pump. Utilizing a VFD allows the pump to operate a lower range of the motor and saves energy as well. Our S technical has provided us with a quote to perform the installation of the VFD for high service pump number two. They have included the cost for the VFD, electrical installation and SCADA connections amount of thirty one thousand two hundred and twenty seven dollars and sixty cents. The largest portion of this cost is for upgrading the necessary electrical wiring. And remember, the existing wiring is forty years old and is different from what we need for the VFD. This is not a budgeted item. However, we feel there's a need to upgrade at least one high service pump at this time to avoid potential problems during times of high demand. We're looking to budget the other two upgrades in the upcoming fiscal year. One bright part of this work is I we're told there's a rebate of three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars available for low light and power for upgrading the electric unit. It's my recommendation that we approve the quote from our S technical for installation and all the necessary wiring of the variable speed drive on high service pump number two.
All right, questions for Dan?
Um, I have one, Dan, the thirty one thousand, what did what do you give up or how do we get that extra money for the thirty one thousand? Where where do you think we're going to get that money, may I ask?
Probably from the fund balance at this time.
Okay.
And you'll have to, it'll be, it'll be in the fund balance. Being that it's an enterprise fund, there's there's obviously funds available.
Thank you.
It's not going to cause any big emergency.
No, not just.
Dan, you're looking at replacing the other two pumps then next year?
Yes, the other the other two drives on them, yes.
So that'd be about sixty sixty two, sixty three thousand then, right?
Yeah, they'd be slightly less than that because some of the electrical work that needs to be done on this first one will also go towards those other two when the time comes for those to be replaced as well. I can't tell you exactly how much that will, how much less that is.
Dan, are the other two at the end of their life as well, are they're all around forty years old?
They're all three are put in at the same time.
Does that kind of leave you in a bind? I know if they lasted forty years, well, what's the life expected of these new VFD pumps?
Right, the VFDs, it's not the pump, it's just the drive on.
The drive, yeah.
I I don't know what the life expectancy is and I can find out and let you know. I do know that other water plants that I've worked at, we've changed ours over to VFDs as well because of the because of they don't have to, when you start the pump up with the VFD, it ramps up and ramps down as well. Like turning the light on where it's all and then off and it saves on the wear and tear, which supposedly is going to make it last longer.
Longer.
All right, any other questions for Dan? All right, motion to replace a high service pump number two.
I'll make that.
Variable frequency drive on it.
Variable frequency drive.
I'll support.
Marty and Jim, any other discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeVor.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Yes.
All right, Dan, you're up again for the clarifier gear drive.
Okay, the clarifier at the water plant turns by way of a motor driven variable speed gear drive. This gearbox is original to the water plant. Add to that. Over the past year, prior to, well, over probably the past almost two years now, this turning mechanism has been started out squeaking and then had a couple of issues with it. But now lately, it's it sounds like it's grinding and there's issues with it that aren't typical for its use. Because of this, the gearbox was budgeted for replacement in this current fiscal year. Water staff, water treatment staff have been trying to find a replacement gearbox for the clarifier. Unfortunately, the same type of unit is obsolete, no longer available. The gearbox and motor is available, however. The gearbox and motor is available, however, it does not have a variable speed for operations. Further investigation has found that the simple gearbox can be converted to variable speed with a frequency drive plus additional wiring, of course. The new drive would also be wired through the water plant SCADA system. Again, this operates as well at a variable speed to keep up with, with demand so that you can make the water at a, at a rate that it's needed versus making it all at once and then waiting at times. RS Technical, the company who handles our SCADA and previous VFD wiring and other electrical work, has provided us a quote to perform the installation of the gearbox and necessary wiring for the operation. The city would purchase and provide to them the gearbox and motor. RX Technical has given us a cost of $14,934.43 to perform the installation. This is a budgeted item, however, the overall cost is about $6,370 higher than we had anticipated. And again, there is a rebate available from low light and power for upgrading of our total $375. It's my recommendation that we approve the quote from RS Technical for the installation necessary wiring of the plant clarifier gear drive.
Questions for Dan on that? Anybody like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion that we accept that offer.
Support.
Marty and Cliff, any other discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeVore.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Very thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Board and Commission reports, Cliff.
I left my notes at the store. I went to the trail meeting via Zoom and forgot my notes. Sorry.
Jim? Jim?
Oh, this week I'll pick you on February. Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, I wasn't sure. Um, this week I'll pick up the, uh, package for the LCTV fund. Apparently, everybody has gotten in their, uh, request. So, and then I think we meet the following week to discuss the LCTV funds, grants. Uh, I attended the Low Light and Power Board Meeting. Um, one of the big key issues, um, was staff comments on their current goals, objective, and action items. Ron, Julie, Megan, Ryan, Casey, everyone had, uh, something to report on, very informative. Um, so some of the examples is a new mapping software they're talking about, so that was kind of, kind of cool, things like that. I see Perry dropped off. Uh, I just wanted to see if he had any, any more comments on that. A lot of information was given and, and that staff does an excellent job of, uh, keeping the power on for us. Uh, one of the things they did do is a study of the, uh, main transmission line on all, I think there's ninety poles that support that transmission line into town. Uh, and they did a study on longevity from rot, what each pole is, so that was kind of interesting how they, they came about discovering what poles are good and bad and the lifelong, uh, that those poles will continue to last. So it, it was pretty cool. So, other than that, that's what I got on my reports.
Awesome. Thank you, Marty.
I have none. Uh, that's it.
Leah?
Um, tomorrow is Parks and Rec, and last week I met with Chambers of Commerce. We talked a lot about the expo. Um, they've gotten super creative with that, so I'm looking forward to seeing that come to fruition. Um, they're hoping, the hours are gonna be ten to three this year, which is different from years past. Um, and they're hoping to kind of end and walk into the social district and have some sort of social, social district event, um, downtown. So that's what I've got from Chambers.
Awesome. Fire, or sorry, Historic District Officer Dean just dropped off my packet. We'll meet on the twenty-third. Fire Authority Matt Shannon covered most of it. Lance Corey from Kems came to give us, uh, or give them, sorry, the lifesaving awards. Uh, we approved the budget and we finished up the cost ordinance that we've already voted on. Um, that's all I have. Vision was today, um, we just talked a little bit about getting started on the community cleanup, which is gonna be here in six months or so. Um, and then Jerry Hale and I are working together to bring a splash pad to Lowell, so that process has started. We've done some preliminary designs. We're gonna apply for some grants and we're gonna see where that goes. That is all I have. Uh, any updates on the budget, Mike?
You know, really not much change from last month. Um, now at twenty-one thousand with the police issue. Um, hopefully that gets wrapped up relatively quick. Um, but I, I also, I don't anticipate much more budget being spent on that. Um, the, uh, yeah, that, for the, for the budget standpoint, that's pretty much, that's pretty much it. There's been nothing out of the ordinary other than what was approved tonight.
All right, any questions for Mike on the budget?
Mm-hmm.
Questions for Mike on the monthly reports?
Mm-hmm.
All right, Mike, your turn. City managers report.
Okay, um, a couple of things. First one is, uh, we're in the process right now of, uh, getting ready for, for next budget season, and, uh, the first thing that we, we obviously, we focus on is the, um, preliminary border review valuations. Um, we're still in the process of putting everything together, but one of the positive things I can tell you is, uh, we've seen a six million dollar increase in real property from last year to this year. In tax dollars, it actually generates to the city, it's about an additional $94,000. Now, we're, like I said, we're still in the process of determining a lot of things. Uh, we're still trying to figure out the, the total with personal property and what the total taxable value is. Um, so with the six million dollar increase, at the, at this point, I can't tell you whether it's going to the, uh, DDA or if it's going to the general fund. My, my guess is that the, this increase is due to the marijuana facilities and it will most likely go to the DDA, but, um, we're still, we're still putting all that together, so I should have some more information on that pretty soon. Uh, one of the things that we're, we're looking at obviously for bud, for budgeting next year, um, I may actually amend the budget this year to accommodate for the second, for the remaining $75,000 for the fire truck. I think we might be able to do that, but I'm still working on that. But we also do need a police vehicle next year. It's been about, I wanna say it's been about five years since we've purchased one. Um, so we're around that time where we, we, we need to start cycling through our, uh, our, our vehicles. Um, we are looking at something a little different with the police vehicle. Um, Cliff might like this. Um, it, we're looking at a hybrid police vehicle. Um, Ford Explorer, they do now make a hybrid police vehicle. Um, we've done some preliminary research on it. The cost difference to purchase it, it's only a couple thousand dollars more, but there's a significant savings on fuel where that buyback's gonna come back in a relatively quick period of time. So, um, I, I know, um, Sergeant Van Solkema has been doing a lot of research on it. I reached out to, uh, City of Novi, they've, they have a number of these in their fleet. Got a lot of positive response from those, so we're still looking at it. Um, and, uh, I think we have some creative ways to pay for that, so we're not actually using the general fund this year as well. So we're working on that and once the budget comes in April, excuse me, uh, we'll, uh, we'll have more information for you.
Mike, is there any incentives for buying one of those hybrids that the city can get or, or off the dealer's deck for buying those hybrid-type vehicles? I know we at our work are starting to look at that from a standpoint. I mean, it's more than one vehicle, but there, there are a lot of incentives to, to go that green or whatever you wanna call it.
Yeah, one of the things that happens with this is, um, we purchased through the Michigan, um, the My Deal price and the state pricing, so we already have, we already purchased these vehicles at a much lower price
Okay.
than you would out in the open market. Um, so you don't really get that savings. You're, you're getting, actually, you're still getting a savings through this um, purchasing the hybrid in comparison if we actually just went out in the open market and tried to buy a, buy a, buy a Ford Explorer police interceptor. Um, so.
Okay.
I know, I don't know if there's any like with, with us charging the vehicle, if there's anything through light and power with it. I honestly don't know the answer. Um, but, you know, we can look into that.
Is, is the city, Chris, your department, are they, are ready, are they ready for that hookup when you pull in?
The way, the, well, the way I understand, because the, the staff car that I drive is a hybrid.
It's a hybrid, not an EV.
Right, you don't, you don't, you don't have to charge. You drive it and it charges itself if you drive it, but if you idle, stop the idle, the engine shuts off, runs off the battery for a few minutes, charges back up, runs off the battery. So the engine's running probably half the time that it needs to run.
Okay. Thank you, Cliff. Hmm? Thank you for educating me.
Well, I, I had a, a impromptu meeting with Scott Van Solkema at the end of my driveway about this very subject, and he said that a new vehicle was in the pipeline and did, did I think that we would go for a hybrid and the, the amount of money, I used to drive a Prius and I averaged fifty-some miles per gallon. And the funny thing is, when you drive in the city, you actually get better mileage because my hybrid, if I was going under forty, the electric was running all the time. So when the guys are patrolling, they're not gonna be burning much gas at all. It'll pay for itself very quickly, in my opinion.
And Scott does a fantastic job with that My Deals thing.
He's a bargain hunter.
Yeah, he's saved us countless amounts of money. Fire Department as well on that My Deals thing.
Very good at that.
Okay.
Um, couple of other items. The MOU that we discussed at the last meeting, I anticipated it'll be at the next meeting. Um, our attorney and their attorney didn't have anything finalized when we were supposed to go out Friday, so hopefully next meeting. Um, I don't know if any of you got an email from the league today. Um, about the redistricting.
Yeah.
If, if you want me to bring them to our, to a meeting, I will. I just wanted to find out if that was something of interest. Uh, basically what it is, is that if you remember two years ago, there was a ballot initiative to redraw the, uh, the, uh, the, the lines for the, uh, for the congressional and the senate districts statewide, and they now have a, um, um, a partisan commission that's equal Democrat, Republican, that's been put in place and they're, they're just taking, they just want feedback from different, different communities and, and they, they're reaching out to um, city councils and, and wanted to know if there was any, uh, interest in, in, in being part of that process. So if, if you want me to, I'll reach out to the league and get us set up. If you don't, that's fine, too. It's.
I would like to learn about it if there's other that are interested. I'm interested.
Sure.
All right, I'll, uh, I'll, I'll get that taken care of.
And Mike, I was in talks, oh, this is before, I don't know, when we go to Franklin Mook last, Marty, February, Jim?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I was in talks with Emily at the league, uh, March and April about bringing a presentation of that Save My City program here, too, because I think it'd benefit us a lot downtown. And I know we had sent out, I had sent out some information. I can find it for you, Leah, and send it to you as well, but if you wanted to piggyback that, Mike, into one league presentation, I know Emily was looking at coming here.
I don't think the league is doing this. I think this is the commission of the redistricting, not the league.
But the legislative branch of the league is doing the presentation, correct?
No, the, the representatives from the commission are.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, it's not, it, it, the league just is the intermediary, from what I understand.
Okay, because I thought they were offering, I might have read it wrong, I guess. I thought they were offering to come. So, and then, sorry, go ahead.
I, I only have one more thing. I just wanted to update the council. Um, the request at the last council meeting, I did, I believe I did carbon copy you on the email, but just wanted to verify. Um, it, it looks like that request is gonna be very difficult to accomplish mainly because with the social district put in place, the, the fact that the, the, the license premises that are gonna be participating are actually, they're paying for an extension of their liquor license to use that space. So, uh, the first thing is, is it'd be very difficult to put um, pop-up shops in the, uh, in the same area as the social district. The second thing, the second thing is, I don't exactly know outside of the social district where you could put them, because there's really not a lot of area uh, to do that outside the social district. And then there's really a discussion that you would really need to have as about whether or not you even would want to be putting these, 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 uh, these structures that don't pay property taxes, uh, in areas where we have stores paying property taxes and, and, uh, and so forth. So that, that's really your call, not mine. Um, but, uh, the other issue too is even to put the, uh, the shannies or the igloos or anything like that in the social district. The only people that could do that technically are people who have those liquor licenses that could do, and there's a process that we would have to do to actually carve those areas where those shannies are outside this, out of the social district because it's the same issue, it's the same issue that we had before where everyone's paying to use that space. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be very difficult to accomplish, but I did at least want to respond back to that.
And I would, I walked downtown and I talked to a little bit, you know, a few of the business owners. I don't think there's any interest in it. I don't think that any of these downtown businesses are thriving to the point where they're gonna move merchandise off-site and bring on additional staffing or close their storefront. Then you gotta think, when these, when this thing is over, what do you do with these buildings now? Are we responsible to get rid of them? Are, are we responsible to, to bring them in? Because a lot of those pod things will require a crane to bring them in or, you know, a large truck. I, I just don't see it as a viable option for us.
Yeah.
And I don't see that there's a, a high level of interest. And you're right, why would, you know, these people in the downtown paying property taxes aren't gonna want. It was the same complaint when we tried to do food trucks, the brick and mortar restaurant saying, hey, we, you know, pay a certain amount of money to be here. I ju, I just don't think there's interest. I, I think it's working well for Rockford and I just don't think it's for us. I don't. There's too much legwork, and then you gotta want, if these are businesses, you gotta run electrical to them or a generator or.
The other thing is, we don't.
Heat, how are you gonna heat them? It's winter time. I went outside once today for three minutes and I didn't wanna do it ever again. I, I just don't think it's viable. I, I, I just don't see any upside for us, at least.
I thought your email did a really good job of answering her concerns.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Uh, Suzie, anything new in appointments?
No.
All right, council comments, Mr. Chambers.
Uh, up north, it's cold and I don't wanna be outside either, but I'll be back tomorrow. I have nothing, that's it.
Cliff?
Thanks to the DPW for keeping the streets and sidewalks and stuff, doing a good job.
Jim?
I didn't know what Cliff said. Other than that, that's it tonight.
Leah?
Um, I'd just like to add that with the social district opening, I hope people use common sense. I hope people are kind. I hope people are slow and steady and, and use caution. Um, I think it's important, even though we're outside, to keep distance from people. And my fingers are crossed that everybody keeps common sense and just has fun.
All right, um, I talked to Lou Bender on, what day is today? Monday, Tuesday? On Sunday afternoon. Uh, April twenty-sixth will be our date for Lou Bender. It'll be in the evening. Um, it's a Monday, just like, uh, it's just an off-council Monday. So we'll be doing that. Um, we're trying to piggyback it with, I tried to get ahold of Charlie today at Light and Power. I wasn't able to, but, um, piggyback it. Shannon at the fire station would like to do a strategic planning, possibly with his, he brought in a bunch of new, a bunch of lieutenants promoted to captain and a bunch of firefighters promoted. A bunch of firefighters promoted to lieutenant and a new deputy chief, so. The strategic plan for the officers there, uh, the fair board is interested in possibly doing a facilitation. Cause they got a lot of stuff coming up now that, you know. And I have to double the fare to make up for last year and they got a move coming up eventually. Um, and then the fire authority, we're gonna discuss possibly doing another facilitation. We didn't get very far through the last one we did. So we're hoping to be able to piggyback, save some costs. Lou will be back in Michigan at that time of year, so there won't be uh, additional airfare or anything like that, so. I'm gonna keep plugging away at that, try to save us a little bit of money. Um, I'm gonna reach out to the league about the Save My City presentation. Um, they put together some pretty good screen share PDFs that they can do. I'd like to do it in person, but. I think it's a super cool initiative. We were, heard about it almost over a year ago now. When Jim and Greg and Marty and I were in Frankenmuth. Um, and I think with the social district and our constant focus on the downtown. It's a good thing to learn about how to hopefully work to get some revenue back to the communities that aren't. Grand Rapids, Detroit or Kalamazoo, so. That's all I have, Jim.
Uh, make a motion to adjourn at eight-ten.
Jim and Marty, Sue?
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeVor.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right, thanks, Suzie. We are adjourned at eight-ten. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.